Meeting of the Town Council to order, we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed, specifically the family of John A. Castaldo. Upon his passing on June 25th, 2019, Mr. Castaldo served the United States Army during World War II. I do not have any of the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting from June 25th. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I don't have any announcements to read into the record. We do not have any proclamations. I will open it up to citizens' open forum if there are any citizens here that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of this meeting. Any citizens at all here wish to speak during the citizens' open forum? Seeing none, I move on to appointments. We have our annual reappointments. I will read the list into the record and then we'll take a vote on that. I'll refer to the town manager afterwards if he has any questions. Annual reappointments, we have Patrick Driscoll to the Affordable Housing Trust, William Callahan, Affordable Housing Trust, David Anderson, Agricultural Commission, Scott Rubin, Board of Assessors, Joseph Gillis, Cable Advisory Committee, Michael Flaherty, Citizens Advisory Committee, Marilyn McDonald, Conservation Commission, Harry Bailey, Conservation Commission, Henry Goldsmith, Disabilities Commission, Anna Nacuzzi, Disabilities Commission, David Frim, Elder Affairs Commission, Sandra Alley, Elder Affairs Commission, Nicholas Baggis, Elder Affairs Commission, Brigitte Boyle, Elder Affairs Commission, Lorraine Coroza, Housing Authority, Gina Gosconi, Park and Recreation Commission, James Campbell, Park and Recreation Commission, Kevin Mandeville, Open Space Committee, Lorraine Coroza, the Save Committee. I'll entertain a motion, I'll refer to the town manager if he has any comments on any of these.
Motion to appoint first.
Okay.
And a second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on that?
Town manager has anything to say?
Yeah.
I think it would be appropriate now.
Mostly just to thank the people that have been serving in these seats for the past several years and certainly use this opportunity to encourage others to apply for the vacancies that we have, particularly in conservation. And you can see some of the other opportunities online.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for being reappointed. We have to have another appointment under B, Carlton Hunt, to the Community Preservation Committee. I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. The town manager have any comment regarding this appointment?
Nope, just to thank Dr. Hunt for coming forward. As the council may know, Melissa DeJardin has moved away or had planned to move away and dropped off the Community Preservation Committee and Dr. Hunt has generously stepped forward to fill that vacancy.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any further discussion? Did you have a comment?
Yeah. Mr. President, so this seat is, the CPC is composed of appointments from other committees in town, right? But this is the one seat that's kind of townwide that you appoint?
Correct.
That you submit?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion from the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I was hoping to drag this out to 7:35.
Mr. President, I'd just make a motion to take item G out of order.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to take item G out of order and there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Item G on the table right now. Item G is a license transaction petition, P2019-011. It's a three one-day entertainment licenses for the Bridge Center. Three one-day entertainment licenses for the Bridge Center. It's in your package. Any comments on this, Mr. Dutton?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Nope, I encourage you to approve those. Everything is in order.
Thank you. There's a motion and there's a second on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those, although this, no, this does require a roll call vote. No, does not require a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, seeing the time now is 7:35, we'll go on to item F on the agenda. Order FY19073, transfer order drain replacement from Hayward Street.
And Mr. President, I'll recuse myself from the discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Wood has noted he's recusing himself from discussion and is leaving the council chambers. The Budget and Finance Committee on 7/8/19 and vote, met on 7/8/19 will provide their disposition to the full council. The Finance Committee met on 7/8/19, their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website for a public hearing. This measure may be fondly considered at the conclusion of the hearing pending the disposition from the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. So I will now declare the hearing being open. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak in favor or opposition to this transfer order? Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this transfer order? Seeing none, I'll now open it up to any questions or comments from the councils regarding this transfer order.
I think we've gone over plenty and know what's going on and what has been done.
Thank you.
Agree.
I'll refer to the town managers just for a brief explanation.
Mr. President, this is an appropriation to, or a transfer to pay for the installation of drainage on Hayward Street as part of the water project. We discovered as we were midway through installation that there was a severe drainage failure on portions of Hayward, so we had to, had to provide the repair and the replacement of a significant amount of the drainage. So this transfer pays for that.
Also, I want to note that the Finance Committee voted last night to approve this and the Budget and Finance Committee voted last night also to approve this unanimously. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Chase?
Just one, Mr. President, thank you. If I may, through you to the town manager. The nature of the failure, is that really of the sort that you had previously demonstrated to the council by images, you know, really where they, either by the infestation of tree roots or just by virtue of the age of the system? That's really what was at the cause of this?
Correct. It was mostly a failure of the materials. We have a lot of corrugated pipe, steel pipe or aluminum pipe in the ground. And when that was installed upwards of 20 years ago or more, that was supposed to be the cutting-edge, latest and greatest pipe. It's turned out not to be that, so we've got a lot of, a lot of disintegration of that pipe and therefore, you know, which eventually causes road cave-ins as well. But the pictures that I showed you are not pictures of this particular pipe, but it's very similar, very similar.
At the time, was Hayward Street one of the streets that was scanned? It was not?
Nope, Hayward had not been scanned and we are actually right in the middle of doing some more additional scanning on a number of streets that we know have that same corrugated metal pipe in the ground.
And I take it there could well be a great number of streets that we don't know about that are suffering the same way?
The roadway superintendent has a guesstimate of the number of miles of that pipe that are in the ground and it's a, it'll be a daunting task to begin to replace those pipes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from any counselor? Okay, I will now declare the public hearing closed at 7:40 PM and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and the second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Mr. Yow?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
There I am. Mr. Fitzgivens?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Very good. Moving on to presentations, as Counselor Wood is now rejoining us, I'll refer to the town manager on a debt, town debt update by our Finance Director, Anthony Solomonte.
Mr. President, I think that's about all the introduction I need to give, so thank you.
First, I want to check this because I'm always having difficulty being heard. Is that good the way it is?
That should be fine.
That should be fine?
Yeah.
Okay. My objective is to just give a context of what we have. I think since I've come on board, we haven't really talked about where we are with our debt. We haven't talked about the definition of what's inside the, you know, debt limit, what's outside the debt limit. Been clear to this body, we have certainly in the budget process identified the debt service within those categories, but also then identify what we foresee happening in the near future and then give you a little bit of a preview of what we're going to be doing later this summer and into next fall as it relates to some of the other major initiatives. You just referred to some of the drainage issues that exist, some of the roadways that have failed. And so those will not be touched on today, only a small piece of that. So there's more work to be done and there's more unknowns that we are unaware of and those types of construction projects will require debt, okay? So I hope to go through the definitions of municipal borrowing, focusing mostly today on inside the debt limit and I will touch a little bit on outside. I want to try to give an explanation as how much the town can legally...
The debt limit or the levy limit?
I'm talking about debt.
Okay.
So there's, yes, I'm sorry, there's different terminology. So they'll, they'll use levy limit and then they'll also say debt within, they have a debt limit or debt capacity, so.
Okay, all right. I was thinking inside, what we can raise a normal two and a half taxation versus what we have to go and ask for new taxes on.
Right, that's a, that's a different conversation.
Okay, thank you.
How the borrowing impacts our bond rating, the town has it in front of them shortly, some major initiatives. And the question that was addressed in the exit interview by our auditing firm, he spoke to the impact that debt can have or not have on your bond rating. So I want to try to explore that so we can all look at that through the same lens. And then also what will it cost? This is part of some of the information that's been provided to the Communication Group who's working on behalf of the work being done for the Mitchell School project. And then there was some additional information that we have regarding town obligations that we think are really on our radar and need to be looked at in context of that particular project as well, so that you can be as informed as possible about what will be for us over the next four or five years. So going to the first piece, so all authorized debt except those expressly authorized by the law to be incurred outside the debt limit shall be reckoned in determining the limit of indebtedness under Chapter 44, Section 10. So this says the town of A can borrow and the categories of borrowing is inside the debt limit, which is mostly for, as it's highlighted here, for a broad range of capital purposes and projects, including acquisition of interest and land, capital assets, equipment, building construction. So that's where a lot of the debt service can lie, when you're doing, doing the calculation about what a city and town can borrow under their maximum allowable borrowing capacity, if you will. So it's important to note that the calculation that's done to determine this is based on 5% of your equalized value. Every two years, there's an equalized value that's done in conjunction with our reporting to the Department of Revenue and that's basically all the values of the homes, businesses, personal property in the community and 5% of that is a deciding factor. Anything above 5%, but no greater than 10% would require a review and approval by the Municipal Finance Oversight Board, all right? So we've got 5%, we're going to get to...
Is that us?
No, it is not. It's a DOR.
Oh, okay.
Department of Revenue. Outside the debt limit, as you can see in some of the descriptions here, speak to a lot of water projects, water reservoir projects, water filter projects, water beds, water mains, water equipment, gas or electric plants, regional incinerators and so forth.
Does sewer come under that too?
Sewer does not.
Sewer does not, just water, okay.
Just water. And it's interesting, interestingly enough, municipal golf courses is actually considered outside the debt limit.
I see roadway, roadway drainage.
Roadway drainage is inside, excuse me, is outside, yes.
Which we just talked about.
Well, might be a really basic or silly question, but the percentage is there, a city or town may not authorize indebtedness in excess of 5%. 5% of what?
Of the equalized value.
Okay.
And what is, what is our latest equalized value?
Going to get there and...
So that's kind of what the town's assets are?
That's the value of all the properties in the town.
Right.
Not the town's assets, but the townspeople's assets.
Okay, got you.
So that's, any other questions on that? So you've got two categories. And the way the DOR works often is if, if you can't find a specific section of the law that would allow it to, that borrowing to be outside the debt limit, it will fall inside. So now we get to...
So, I'm sorry, can we take a step back? So on the special purpose, one thing I don't see on there, which my assumption was, so if we go forward with a new school, that's outside the debt limit, correct?
Actually, it's not even part of our calculation for our, against our ability to borrow.
Okay.
Because that's considered the regional school district's debt, although we have an assessment for that. There's, we have to break this up. We're talking about what the town can actually go out and bond and that does not, in reviewing with bond council, that does not get subtracted in what we're allowed to borrow in total.
So even though, even though the school will be Bridgewater property, it's going to fall under the district?
That's correct. And we will get an assessment for the annual debt service on that. That's how it works. That's how it works now. There's no direct debt paid directly by the town of Bridgewater for any schools. It is an assessment through, because there's two components. One would be the buildings that are town buildings that there's debt on, that we have an assessment, and then there's district buildings and that is dependent upon enrollment. Each year, that assessment changes, just like the calculation for the town's assessment as a portion of their operating budget.
So if I might follow up, essentially, these rules all apply to a regional school district too, in certain ways, as to what they can...
They would have their own guidelines, that's correct.
They have their own rules about inside, outside, what they can borrow, et cetera, and they have to follow them. All we have to do is fund the amount of money that they ask for.
That's correct.
Go from there.
Now, when they go out to bond, they will need our financial information and they will need Rainham's financial information.
And just as a kind of follow-up to that, does DOR look at that at all in considering 5%, 10%?
They do not.
They don't care. So we could go right up to the 5% and have the school borrow a ton of money too and owe it back. And it's not a good practice, but I, but that theoretically could happen.
Theoretically, and that was the discussion I had with Bond Council yesterday.
Thank you.
So just one follow-up question, if I may. So while you use the term assessment from the district, it's actually a line item in the operational budget as a separate line item from the regular district assessment.
That's correct.
Right. So, so you see that broken out in the overall budget?
Yes, it's a separate piece. So here's how you would calculate the, you would go to, you can go to the Department of Revenue's website every two years. This is the equalized value that is on our LA 13 report, which is also available online. The assessor has this information. So it was $3,016,111,400 was the equalized value for all the properties in the town of Bridgewater as of the fiscal year 2018.
So we can have principal outstanding of $150 million, roughly?
5%. Yes, that's your starting point, that's correct. And so, the other thought here, it will be updated in our FY20, reporting to the Department of Revenue. So you would imagine that the equalized value would go up for the town, therefore the basis for your calculation. So there you go, there's your 5% or $150,805,570. So then what we do is we take that and we look at our current debt that's inside the debt limit and we reduce that by that amount. So I go back to our debt schedules and say, what's the total debt inside the debt limit? It's $11,191,907. Then I look at what's projected new debt inside the debt limit. I used an estimate for the time being of $25 million for the sewer project. That's why that number's so high, that $50 million. I'll go into some of the other details when I break it down further. And then you add back the debt that's going to be paid, because I'm doing this as a point of time projection as of 6/30/23, and therefore we end up at $92,843,001. So what's the set?
Tony, in a recession, when property values drop, then your debt limit drops, correct?
If your equalized valuation drops, then your ability to borrow drops. Yeah, and looking at this, this is just, this is, I think, a high watermark. I haven't done the analysis to see what other communities do in relationship to the equalized value, what they have on the books. That's the next phase of this, is to benchmark us. But as you can see, there's quite a bit of room in this particular calculation that says, yes, you do have the capacity for borrowing. So that was...
Now let's talk inside the levy limit versus outside the levy limit. We don't have any capacity inside the levy limit, really, do we? Inside the levy limit.
Okay. Oh, okay, now...
Those would all be debt exclusion.
Now you're talking about your policy for borrowing.
Right.
It's been my message through the town manager, Assistant Town Manager, Budget Finance Subcommittee, Finance Committee, is that any new borrowing would need to be done, based on my professional opinion, as a debt exclusion, which means it's outside your levy limit.
Which means that people have to vote to raise their taxes.
It impacts the taxes, just like the vote for a number of things, this building, the vote that's going to probably go before the townspeople for the new, the new school. If that was moved inside of our levy limit, we would have to incur an additional cost of, you know, close to $300,000 that we could not bear and still maintain the level of services that we have.
Yep. I just wanted people to be clear on that.
No problem.
Thank you.
So, so now we're done with the total amount that you can borrow that's considered inside the levy limit. You notice I didn't talk about outside because the restrictions are far greater. I mean, the restrictions are far less because it's outside and therefore it falls under the special laws that each one of those borrowings would be. So we'll put that aside because for this exercise, I don't think we need to explore what is outside at this point, except for when it impacts the taxpayer. And that I'll get to in a, in a moment. So how does the bonding agencies look at things? They look at things in relationship to what you have for debt service in your budget, in your operating budget, as it is a percent, as it is in relationship to the percent of the entire operating budget. So between 8% and 15% would be your safe range. Obviously, the closer you get to 15%, the more at risk you are if you were to have to incur additional debt, because you could bump over that 15%. So being conservative, moving your debt service up to 15% of your operating budget would probably be ill-advised.
So in this bonding agency formula, and let's go back to the regional school district and the town, do they consider the 8 to 15, what we're paying for the school district, even though the DOR won't consider it? Do the bonding agencies consider it or?
Yes.
So they consider that?
They consider that.
Their rating.
So yeah.
But DOR doesn't, within the 5% number.
And this is where it gets even a little more hairy is because we're talking about the general fund debt. So now the, the water and sewer that's paid for by rates doesn't come into this calculation because it's not debt service funded and paid for out of the, the general fund. So I created a little green, red, yellow chart here. So in looking at where we are today, so we had an operating budget of $58,183,973, which is in column one, and our current debt service from our operating budget is $2,422,034. That's only 4.2% of our operating budget. I consider that green. We're in good position for borrowing. If we were to take on the additional debt service as outlined, I will outline it further, but it includes the estimated cost for the Mitchell School. It includes the $15 million new forest station, 4.5 million for your drainage work, 5.5 million for roadway work. I think that covers it. So those would need to be included and are included in the $8,523,288 estimate if all that debt was to be bonded and brought online. So I'm giving you a worst-case scenario.
Just so I'm clear, the five and a half million roadway drainage thing is outside the debt limit, but it's inside this number.
That is correct, because it's part of your operating budget and you're going to have to pay for that. So you can see how if you were to move ahead just with those projects, and that doesn't represent the number of roadway issues, drainage issues and other items that will, that will start to unfold as we do the work with the highway superintendent and use the data from street scan to begin to come up with a plan to move the indexing, which is a way of qualifying the quality of your roads from where it is today to a point in which this council and the townspeople choose, because that will require additional bonding above what I've mentioned. So there hasn't been a plan to attack upgrading the overall condition of your, your roadways and sidewalks.
So then the other question I have is, I see a very rosy forecast of about one and a half million or so a year being added to the operating budget.
Tim, could we just get through the presentation and then ask his questions afterwards? If that's okay?
I'll shut up, Dennis, thank you.
So in this estimate, you can see with those particular items I mentioned, for the next four years, if I also put in, in this projection, I said budget increases... the next four years, if I also put in this projection, I said budget increases assumed at 3%. And so therefore... From 2021 to 2024, you can see, I would put that in the higher range or in the red category. And then if no additional debt came onboard, then you would move into what I refer to as a midpoint or yellow category, and then by 2028, you'd be in that green category. Just a way of, you know, parsing this out a little bit for discussion purposes. We could go back and forth as to what's acceptable, what's mid-range, but it's basically split down the middle with the yellow and red as it gets closer to that 15% top portion. And low is 0 to 8 is indicated on the bottom, and mid-range is 8.1 to 11.5. So after doing that calculation, I also put forward to you another way of looking at these projects and where they are if they were to begin sometime collectively in 2021, and that's in this category here. So I started with the basis of FY '19's tax rate of $1483, because '20 hasn't been set yet. And therefore, I just increased the tax rate across the board at 2.5%. That's not how the tax rate actually works, but for modeling purposes, that's what I did. And then, as you can see in other presentations, the cost of the school portion of the debt would be projected at $1.25 per thousand, and .39 per thousand for the fire station, and that was the roadways and drainage that I alluded to. And you'll see some other graphics where those figures are actually used as the starting point for these calculations. But then it just moves outward, so someone could take this, if you wanted to, and determine what is the cost per thousand for your home at 80 cents. You could do the math, and I'll go through the exercise at the end to determine what does that mean today. So today, it's 80 cents per thousand that you're paying for debt service, and then it would be $2.67 per thousand. And the reason we say this, because this is all outside of the levy limit. So this is all added tax that the taxpayer approved to do certain construction projects. And so they know what they were paying for, and that example would be that building. I think it's important to know that the current debt that we have on the books is 66 cents per thousand. So some folks ask, well, what debt is falling off? Well, if you look at the 66 cents, it goes down to 11 cents and 29. So that's existing debt. The way of looking at, what are you paying per thousand for your existing debt? You would just take that particular amount and multiply it times thousands of value of your property, and that would give you what you're actually paying for the various components of the debt service, if someone chose to do that. It will get a little more clear, I hope, as I go through some of the actual graphics on this. So this is something that the Town Manager provided to the communication group for the Mitchell School, and we did this graphic that would give a specific calculation to those individuals that wanted to look at this through the average value of a home, single-family home in Bridgewater, to give you a context. So in year one, all those projects, as identified on the prior page, would cost $774 in year one for that year to pay for that portion of the debt service for these projects. That was the five that I mentioned. It been asked, well, what happens when the debt comes off, and therefore what's the diff between current, excuse me, the proposed debt, and what would net of it be as other debt service numbers drop? So I put forth to you in year one, for comparison purposes, $774 would be the cost of the new debt going on, using that single-family home average, and $774, okay, excuse me, move over, $754 in year two, $744. So there's a $10 savings because debt's coming off, if you want to look at a net savings. You go across the board, and in year 10, the new debt would be impacting this homeowner of the average family, single-family home of $595, yet the net would be $383. So there can be a significant difference in year 10. You can see it's not a lot, because you don't have a lot of debt on the books. So it has some impact, but not a significant impact. But that's what this is intended to present to you, so you may be informed. And then we break it down for the different projects. We have a graphic that just looks at the Mitchell School, year one, $482, year 25, $251. That'd be the cost under this example. You go to the new fire station, it would be $151 in year one and $79 in year 25. You look at the 15-year project for your roadways, because that's the extent in which we can bond a roadway, year one, $78, year 15, $48, and the drainage, $63 and $39. So it gives you a sense as to what the tax burden would be. That leads me to the last piece. If someone wished to calculate their cost, it's based on a rate per thousand, and that's what these dollar amounts below are. So we're taking year one here of $1.25 for the school per thousand, .39 for the fire station, roads, 20 cents, drainage, 16 cents, and then down below, we just show a calculation taking a single-family home valued at $459,000. You could take your own, $400,000. And all you do is take the value of your home, which is on your, the total value of your home and land on your real estate tax bill, you divide it by 1,000, and you multiply it times $1.25 if you want to determine the cost for the school or the impact that it's going to have. In this case, it's $574 annually, because this house in this example is valued at $459,000. And then the cost of the drainage annually in year one for that same property would be $74 to fix the drainage. So this is, in fact, what I hoped to do was to give you a sense as to some different lenses in which to look at the debt service. What can you borrow that's allowable inside the maximum you can borrow inside the debt limit? And what the bond rating agencies look at as a percent between 5% and 15% of your equalized value as a means to determine your viability and how you're servicing the debt and whether or not you're overextending yourself, because if you stay within that 5% to 15%, you will not have a negative impact on your bond rating. And then lastly, how can you figure out what these types of projects will cost you as members of the council and the taxpayers? And hopefully you have a little better understanding of that as of now. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Wood?
I have a question about average home value.
It's just an arbitrary number to do a calculation.
So are you taking the overall assessment and splitting it by number of properties, or are you...
That's a number reported by the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
They take all of our property information. They provide us.
Do they report median value as well?
We could get median value. We could get high. We can get low. That's why the last calculation says, take your value of your property, divide it by 1,000, and then do the multiplication. You can find out exactly what it would cost you as a taxpayer.
As a follow-up, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Would it be possible through the Town Manager to work with Brad to, not all of us, it seems simple math, but maybe not all of us can do it, but, you know, similar to a mortgage calculator that appears online, if we could build something on the town's website where residents can take their assessed value, plug it in, they're going to get the number that they're looking for?
Yeah, we've already started discussing that.
Awesome.
Counsel O'Donnell? I thought you had a question.
No, but I'll take the floor. Thanks. Something on that, you know, in that vein where people can see kind of what is on, you know, their property and their kind of balance sheet for their home for their taxes, something that came from a different meeting was that people were willing to pay more in taxes for better services. You know, when you look at that, is there a place where people can donate to additional things that they feel specifically would, they would want more funding to go to? Because that was something that came out of a townwide survey, that people were looking, if they knew what their money was going to, how do they get money to those places?
I'll take that one. Ultimately, in terms of wanting to pay more for particular items, I think particularly that people were interested in that survey and paying for capital items, you know, things that Tony's pointed out, roads, drainage, schools...
Everything outside of it.
Buildings, what have you. So the way that voters translate that opinion into reality is basically go to the ballot and vote for the debt exclusion. We do, on rare occasion, will get a little bits of money donated to us for very specific things, and those are generally very small amounts, not to be allocated towards, you know, road improvements, but, you know, I can't even think of a good example, you know, replace the brick sidewalk, you know, from here to here, that kind of thing. Those are much smaller, though. And we certainly don't discourage that, but...
Thank you. Anybody else?
Through you to Finance Director. So when you're doing your projections on your debt over a 20-year period, what do you use as your, we'll call it a basic, interest rate for that 20-year period? First question. Second question is, over the course of time, even in the projections, they could actually come down significantly on refinance opportunities.
Yeah, we go over it with our Bond Counsel, and then we talk about what is a fair estimate for interest rates. Obviously, we have to be conservative. Taxpayers don't like a surprise in the wrong direction. But, yeah, we used a 3.5%, and that's net of bond premiums that we would offset the debt with, debt service with.
Thank you. I don't know who asked for this on the agenda, but it was a very good topic. Thank you for the time you took to come in and put that together.
Thank you.
Still light out, too. Moving on to Item B, 80 Spring Street presentation. I believe that's going to be postponed for a future meeting. Town Managers Report. I'll refer to the Town Managers. Couple of topics on here. An update on Broad Street properties.
Mr. President, I have a very brief update on the Broad Street properties. We did reach out to the owner of many of those properties and asked if a little bit of effort could be at least put into, you know, cutting the field, so to speak. So I've not heard back on that piece. We have also been told that, promised that we'll have plans and the application for the planning board in place as quickly as they can move. So not sure what that means, but that's really my brief and not very satisfying update on that one. So I know they did experience a little bit of a delay for reasons other than, well, certainly other than us, so they're dealing with that, so...
I don't know who asked for that.
I did. Actually, through you to the Town Manager. So from your understanding, for the record, the property owner has not submitted any plans to the planning board for any of the properties on Broad Street?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
The other item on consultants, I asked for this to be put on, and I did speak to the Town Manager prior to tonight's meeting to satisfy my question, so I will just let you know what I wanted. I took the matrix that he put together for us, and I printed it out, had it printed out, and I asked him to put together a timeline of some of the ones that I highlighted or will highlight to him. Some of them, like Counsel Wood said last meeting, were more contracts than consultants. So I didn't include a lot of them. But some of the ones that we have approved through transfers and capital monies, I asked him to put a timeline of when it was approved, when the RFQ has gone out or will go out, what the timeframe is for conclusions and results. So that's what I asked him to put together. So that was the reason why I put it on. But I had a chance to talk to him before this, so I'm satisfied with the consultants portion of the agenda item, unless any of you have any further questions to him about consultants.
No, this is actually a question for you. He'll send it out to us with all those dates.
Yes, it won't be all of the items to be...
Yeah, the ones...
Yes, yes.
Great.
That was my question. I just wanted to see the timelines.
And I guess, Mr. President, just for what it's worth, you know, this is obviously of some interest to the council, rightly so, and probably some interest to the public. So I have no problem, you know, once we get it into a format that is, you know, easily usable or easily viewed, I have no problem putting that on the website.
Okay.
And then keeping it updated. So happy to do that.
I guess that's it. Do you give a report now, or it's just what's on the agenda, right? That's it, right? That's it.
So, Mr. President, the item that's missing is updates for next time. Can I ask for one for next time here?
Yes.
Awesome.
August 6th.
I'm on vacation. I may not even be here, but...
Save it.
No, the website, over the years, has improved somewhat, but it's still difficult to find things. You know, when you send a link to somebody, it says blah, 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 slash 17062 slash document, and it's not really descriptive. So my question for next meeting is, is there a way that our technology folks could make meaningful titles on that? I know that it has to go into like a, you know, document repository, and that's what it actually is, but the problem is, and this is a long way to the question, the problem is that, like, for our administrative code that we spent years putting together, it's impossible to find. And when you do find it...
So do you want this as a discussion item for next time? Because you're going into detail that's not on the agenda.
No. The question is, can we get technology to talk about, and when I say technology, I mean the folks either through the Town Manager or somebody else, through the Town Manager's report, kind of an update on where we're going with the town website, knowing that there's issues finding documents and things like that? Is that a good question?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chase?
If we could, Mr. President, add an item for next time, I'd be curious to receive an update on the status of the former Rainbow's End playground in terms of, I know that equipment has been removed from the playground, and I don't think we've received a great deal of information about plans for the ultimate disposition of that.
Rainbow's End update, where we stand with that, okay? Anything else, Mr. Columbor? You had your hand up and down, and up and down. Okay. Okay. Discussion, and it doesn't preclude anyone between now and then, or before the agenda goes out, to reach out to Ann and say, could we put this on the agenda? Okay? Standing discussion item is the Mitchell School update. I'll refer to the Town Manager for an update. No, they had a meeting last night.
The Mitchell School Building Committee did meet last night and voted on the final submission to the MSBA. So that has been finalized, signed, and will be delivered tomorrow, I believe. Again, I'll just, as it pertains to the council's upcoming role in this, the hope of the committee is that the council will entertain first reading of appropriation and borrowing legislation at your August 6 meeting, and then follow... at your August 6 meeting, and then follow that up. Obviously, you'll have a period of time between August 6 and September, enough for the advertising, so that your hearing and vote can occur at one of the two September meetings. Excuse me. And they'd like to target October 19, I believe it was, as a potential election day, but that is obviously not set. You are the ones that set that election date, ballot date, so, but that is what they're proposing or will be proposing to the council in fairly short order, so just, so you can keep that sort of in the back of your minds. For those that don't know, and I'm, councillors all know, but those watching may not know, the Mitchell School Committee has proposed the demolition and construction of a new school, a new Mitchell School, and with, I believe it was approximately 137,000 square feet, somewhere in that neighborhood, 130 or so. And I think people have seen, most people have seen some of the plans that is available online, if you want to go look at it. It's not the same type of building that's there now, which is a three-pronged E, essentially. It's a little bit more multi-story, built into the hillside the same way as the current Mitchell is. So, approximate cost, according to reconciled estimates, is 80 million, just a little bit more than 80 million. The approximate reimbursement rate, once all of the exceptions are figured in, is a little more than 40 percent. So, that is sort of about where we stand right now. But again, just to give you a little forewarning on what you probably will be seeing for first reading at your August meeting, and then obviously we'll have a discussion about the timing after that, certainly in conjunction with the school building committee. I also think it probably makes sense, and I'll work with the President on this, but it probably makes sense to have the school building committee chair in to sort of give a little presentation of the history. I know the OPM and the architect designer will also be available to answer questions, and again, I'll work with the President to see if you want to do that at your first reading, or you want to save that for the hearing. That'll be up to you. So, they are certainly available for that.
Any questions regarding the Mitchell School update? Seeing none, the committee reports. Are there any committees that wish to give a report? Go ahead. Bill?
I'll report on our Budget and Finance meeting from last night. Under L, Legislation for Action, we took votes on Number C, actually, to continue it in committee, so when we get to that item, we will postpone that one. D, we voted 3-0 to support. E, we supported 3-0. F, we supported 3-0. And G, we supported 3-0. Thank you.
Any other committees? Anybody of the committees wish to give a report tonight? Moving on to Legislation for Action, there's quite a few items here, so let's go through these. I believe all of them require a roll call vote, some of them require a 2/3s vote. A, Ordinance FY19003, Zoning Ordinance. Amend Table of Uses: Cultivation, Manufacturing, and Testing of Recreational Marijuana. The Community Economic Development and Planning Board conducted a duly-advertised joint public hearing on June 19, 2019. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Community and Economic Development Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend approval, and the planning board voted unanimously to recommend acceptance. This measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website, therefore may be finally considered for this evening.
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Columbotus? Almost got it in.
We almost thought you were done. This has been to the Community Economic Development Committee a few times, and we've been over it a long time. I would actually, I actually contemplated amending it once again, but upon the urging of the Director of the Community Economic Development Department, I'll stand aside on that and just urge passage. We need to just get something on the books before we lose control of what goes where. So, this essentially allows, by special permit, the siting of a facility in the South Business District, Business B, in the industrial districts, and in the Plan Development District, and those in all of their, all residential districts, and in the Central Business District.
Okay. I also have a note here. It says that we need to make a motion to amend recreational marijuana to adult-use marijuana, which is in the reading here, I believe.
I'll make a motion for the amendment.
Okay. There's a motion and there's a second for the amendment that says recreational marijuana to adult-use marijuana. Any discussion on that? All those...
I just make sure that's, there's no restrictions on that.
I spoke with Ms. Burke about that. It was actually at her urging. She wanted to make sure that the current ordinance that you all pass mirrors what Mass. General Law says, so that's why she was recommending it.
Any other discussion?
Can I get clarification where that amendment falls within this?
I just have it in yellow on my sheet here. I don't know where...
Most likely the title, where it says recreational marijuana, and any place where it will say recreational marijuana will be updated to adult use. To Mr. Rowling's point, is how Mass. General Law is adopting.
Question to our attorney, then. Does that affect medical marijuana?
No. Those actually, in our ordinance as it stands, have their own definitions, have their own ordinance. This does not override that ordinance in any fashion. So, this is a completely separate ordinance that only relates to this type of adult use, which is, I guess, synonymous under Mass. General Law is now with recreational, is what Ms. Burke had informed me.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'm in favor of it, and then when we get to the main motion, I do have another comment to make.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the amendment passes. Now, we're under the main motion. I'll refer to Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I just wanted to note that, at least myself and maybe two other councillors at large, got an email from Mrs. Hansen, Jen Hansen, from Pleasant Street, saying that she urges support of this. She's really not happy that not all knows, but she understands that's what has to happen, and she urges the council to support it. So, I wanted to make sure I brought that up.
Very good. Okay, so we're acting under the motion, the main motion now. There has been a motion and a second. This does require a roll call vote of 2/3s or 6 members of the council.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
That's been passed. So, now we're acting under B, Ordinance FY19056, Chapter 61B, Intent Not to Exercise Right to Purchase Land. At their meeting held on June 21, 2019, the Community Economic Development Committee voted unanimously to recommend this measure. 14 days has elapsed, per Section XV111 of the Council Rules and Procedures, therefore may be finally considered for this evening. So, a positive vote would be to exercise our right not to purchase, exercise our right not to intend to purchase this land. This does require a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved not to exercise our right.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion? This does, go ahead.
Where is the land?
Excuse me, it's to the west side of Bedford Street, further down towards Middleborough.
Any other questions? This does require a roll call vote.
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
There's also a sheet here that we all need to sign as councillors, so I will start passing it over to my right.
Is there a particular pen we have to sign this in?
While that's being passed around, we'll move on to Item C, Order FY19057, Directing the Town Manager to Create a Special Reserve Fund.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to refer back to the Budget and Finance Committee until such time as deemed appropriate to bring forward.
There's a motion, is there a second? Second discussion?
I'll second that, but it hasn't actually left committee, so...
Yeah, it hasn't left committee, so...
Good enough.
Shouldn't be on the agenda at all, then, really.
Well, so maybe we can modify the motion to postpone until a meeting further down the road.
Until the Budget and Finance Committee has a recommendation.
It's being postponed.
Right.
Acting under D, Order FY19058, Transfer Order, One-Time Unforeseen Expenses. At their meeting held June 10, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend this measure. At their meeting held on June 25, 2019, the Budget and Finance Committee postponed this measure to 7/8/19. Their disposition will be provided at the full council. This was approved last night at 3 to 0, as Counselor Wood said, prior to going through these orders. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion? I just have a comment about this, and I had some issues last night, but I ended up supporting this. But as I said, as was brought up earlier, under Consultants, there were two things that concerned me last night, and I think it's something that, you know, we all should be concerned about. I mean, this is another $65,000 expenditure that the town will incur at some point to hire a consultant to look at the buying habits of the town of Bridgewater relative to businesses that were, could be here, that aren't here, where our money is going elsewhere. So, the troubling thing for me last night was the fact that a potential respondent to an RFQ gave a presentation to us about what they could do, and it really was a little uncomfortable at some point, because it sounded like that this person, like, already had the job. And if you look at the report that the Town Manager put together, they were already listed as the consultant when the RFQ hasn't gone out. And he said to us last, that person that was there last night, very capable, very sharp gentleman, basically said that they currently don't do any business in Massachusetts, and that they will work closely with the town. So, it's just something for you guys to be aware of, and that's why I kind of am honing in on some of these consultants that we have approved appropriation for, for the past three or four years that I've been here. Some may go back further, to get a timeline as to when will these be done and what kind of results will we see from these. So, that was some of my concerns last night, but I ended up supporting it, but I think that hopefully we'll see what this... And he gave me a timeline. He gave me, that individual gave a timeline as to how something like this should proceed and when a report should come out, have that person or company be the bidder or whatever. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Actually, until last night, I wasn't sure I was going to support this. I did get turned on some of the discussion last night. There are multiple companies out there that do this sort of research, so this transfer is actually just to fund the ability for the town to create a relationship with some company that can provide a data set that tells us how to attract business to the town. And as our Economic Director and Assistant Town Manager have said, they cold-call people, and there's no interest. The hope is that with a data set and tools available to match business to the town's demographics and other elements, that there would be much more success at filling storefronts and populating empty lots and finding good relationships between business and town. And I agree with Dennis in that there was a specific person that may or may not get the contract, depending on how the RFQ goes and some other things. We discussed specific names about competitors. There will be competitors that are in the bidding process. It isn't certain that that particular company is the one, but it was enlightening to hear what kind of services and data is available now for towns and municipalities to tie into to try to make those relationships between towns and retail in particular, but even industry work out better, faster, and have a better match for succeeding for, you know, multiple years. So, now I support it because of that discussion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Loesch?
I don't need the answer today, but if you can provide those competitors that do the similar thing, I would love to see that. Thank you.
This does require a roll call vote. I believe it does require 2/3s or 6 members of the council.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to Item E, Order FY19074, Transfer Order, Employment Contractual Obligation. Budget and Finance Committee met last evening, and their disposition will be provided to the full council on 7/9/19. The Finance Committee met on 7/8/19. Their disposition will be provided upon receipt. 14 days have elapsed, per Section XV111 of the Council Rules and Procedures, therefore this measure may be finally considered this evening. Pending disposition from the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees, and both committees, I believe, have approved this, as mentioned earlier. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Item F, Order FY19075, Transfer Order, Cultural Council Grant Match. The Budget and Finance Committee met 7/8/19. Their disposition will be provided to the full council on 7/9/19. The Finance Committee met on 7/8/19. Their disposition will be provided upon receipt. 14 days has elapsed, per Section XV111 of the Council Rules and Procedures, therefore this measure may be finally considered this evening. Pending dispositions of the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee, and I believe both committees have approved this. This does require a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Columbotus?
I think this represents a good investment. We're getting a 50-50 match from the state, I believe, and there's tremendous evidence to show that drawing, fostering the cultural amenities and the arts is a, can be a really dramatic engine for economic redevelopment, and it also improves quality of life, provides stuff for families and people in town to do, so I wholeheartedly support this.
Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to Order FY20007, CPA Reserve Accounts for FY20. The Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend this measure at their meeting held on April 10, 2019. The Budget and Finance Committee postponed voting on this measure pending a disposition from CPC. On June 26, 2019, the CPC voted 5 to 0 to recommend this measure. The Budget and Finance Committee met 7/8/19, and will provide their disposition to the full council on 7/9/19. Pending their disposition, this measure may be finally considered this evening, and we did vote to approve this last night.
Correct.
This does require a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion?
I would just like a little explanation. Most of these items are 10%. The state requirement that we set aside 10% to each of the three areas of the Community Preservation Act, but the $378,000 to pay off debt related to the purchase, renovation of this building, is that, are we deciding to pay a bond off early, or is that kind of a routine part of the schedule of bond payment?
Exactly. That's your schedule of bond payments, and that's the portions that's allocated out of the CPC for the life of the bond. allocated out of the CPC for the life of the bond. It'll continue to drop.
Oh, it's over time, okay.
It'll, it'll drop over ti, excuse me, time, but that's the amount this year, or, yes, this year.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to Order FY20008, Transfer Order, Capital Water Special Purpose Transfer. At their meeting held on Ju, on April 16, 2019, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend this measure. The Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval at their meeting on May 13, 2019. This measure may be finally considered this evening. Does require a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Do you, do you have to recuse yourself as this one? No?
No, I don't believe so, no. I was making a motion, but.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to the last item under L, Order FY20009, Transfer Order, Capital Sewer Special Purpose Transfer. At the meeting held on April 16, 2019, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend this measure. The Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval at their meeting on May 13, 2019. This measure may be finally considered this evening. This does require a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion? Mr. Columbotus?
Through you, I'd like to ask the town manager, were these two purchases forecasted under the capital plan?
They were.
All right, they were. Great, thanks.
Any further discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, that section is completed. Old business. I don't see any new business. We have a few order, an ordinance and an order before us. Under A, we have ordinance FY20001, General Ordinance, the Stormwater Ordinance sponsored by Counselor Loesch. This needs to be referred to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. Did you want to explain it a little bit tonight? This needs to be referred to the Budget and Finance and Finance, no. What committee should we refer this to?
I think Community and Economic Development.
Community and Economic Development? Is there a motion to refer this to the Community and Economic Development Committee? There's a motion.
Second.
And there's a second. Any discussion on the motion to refer this to Community and Economic Development? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right? Yeah, that ordinance has been referred. Under B, Ordinance FY20011, Contract Ratification, United Steelworkers.
President, can we lump all of these next ratifications into one and refer them to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee? I'd make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion to refer Items B, C, and D, which is Orders FY20-011 through 013, to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee, and there's a second. These are contract ratifications for three unions, United Steelworkers, Firefighters, Bridgewater Administration Association. These are sponsored by the town manager through his negotiations. They'll come back to the council at a future meeting. Do you have any thing you want to say about them, or when they come back? No?
Nope, I can address them when they come back. I think very generally, we use this session or this round of negotiations to simplify a lot of the language, tried to create a little more parity, or continued to provide, negotiate more parity among the units, and we tried to align the contracts with current law. So that and fairly reasonable cost of living increases as well.
All those in favor referring these three orders to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Item O is Citizens' Comments, since our attendance has doubled since the beginning of our meeting. Double zero is zero, right? No, double one. Are there any citizens here wish to speak in the Citizens' Comments portion of this meeting? Any citizens at all wishing to speak in the Citizens' Comments portion of this meeting? Seeing none, I'll turn to Counselor Fitzgibbons to begin our Council Comment section of our meeting.
I just want to thank Counselor Columbotus, Counselor Loesch, and everyone who's been on the Community and Economic Development Committee and on the planning board for the last couple of years for getting this marijuana zoning ordinance to a place where we could vote nine to nothing in favor of it. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues on the council for actually getting some zoning done for this. Much appreciated.
Mr. Columbotus?
I just briefly want to touch on, often when any, we counselors are referring to the Community and Economic Development Committee, we often stumble upon, over those words, and I guess I wanted to kind of remind people that when the council was first formed, it was many years ago, the original name of that committee was called the Economic Development Committee, and I put forward an amendment to include the word "community" within that committee name. And my, my thought behind it was that, that economic development to really be, to last, to serve the citizens, really needs to emphasize the development of the community at large and not just moneyed interest, and that if we preserve our assets, our, you know, historic buildings, our open spaces, our cultural amenities, that, that about which Bridgewater we really treasure, that if we develop those things, that that will help economic development. So I just kind of, I'm really pleased that we seem to be taking that, that sort of approach to things and investing in the community at large with an eye towards economic development, and I think it's a, it's a natural pairing that makes sense. I'm glad we're doing it. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Loesch?
Okay, thanks. I want to say thank you to the Bridgewater Fourth of July Committee. We had a great time last week. It went off without a hitch, and I appreciate all the volunteers who spent countless hours and days and months and a full year. I know they're already planning for 2020, I'm sure, but just want to say thank you for a great day in town.
I echo those sentiments as well, with the Fourth of July Committee and all the hard work they put in. I just also wanted to mention the work of the School Building Committee, you know, for reaching what I view as really a major milestone in this project, moving it forward. I know the amount of hours that they have committed, night after night, and multiple subcommittees and whatnot trying to get us to this point, so I'm hopeful that it keeps moving along. I just want to thank them. This is a major accomplishment in this project.
Mr. George?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I want to reiterate, the Fourth of July Committee did a fantastic job on the parade. The fireworks, I thought, were probably the best I've seen since the years I've been going there, so, and I know that there was a little bit of a hiccup that was taken care of flawlessly that night, so thank you to all involved. One thing I just want to say is, in line with Counselor Rushden, the work for the School Building Committee has finished one phase, and now we need to go into a second phase. I do appreciate the numbers that are put up by our finance director, but the numbers themselves don't paint the entire picture. There's going to be many different things that people are going to have to take into consideration. One of them is financial, but also is going to be community development. It's going to be quality of life. There's going to be a lot of things that I hope people take the time to sit down, educate themselves, and make an informed decision on moving forward. And I've said this a million times, I'll say it a million times again, regardless of the decision, if I feel people are making informed decisions, I'll live with the outcome. But I just hope that people that were involved, that aren't involved anymore, do take the time to approach things in a fair and equitable manner, as well as the people that are still involved are out there educating the people on what it is, what it isn't, and things that we have to take into consideration overall. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Throughout the year, we spend an awful lot of time on the budget process. Budget's huge. We saw a presentation tonight, and, you know, the budget always makes me feel like we're a big town because, in effect, we are a city in the, you know, the shoes of a town. The Fourth of July makes me feel like we're a really small town, and I really like that. So, you know, it's really engaging to see the parade, you know, see the people out celebrating the parade, the flags up, and then the whole arts and the end of the day, the fireworks, which were spectacular. You know, I don't know how they do such a big show on such a tight budget, but they do. And all the volunteers stepped up, whether they were listed as, on the committee or otherwise. I really appreciate that you put it together that day that we can all enjoy. Because the budget's such a big process and because we went through, I have invited the district to participate in a number of workshops. Three main workshops, one covering revenue estimates, one covering expense estimates, and one covering capital planning. We're hoping to accomplish those this summer while it's somewhat quiet in both the district and the town. I just sent a note this morning to Mr. Swenson, again, trying to figure out some dates that that could happen. My preference would be to hold them here because I've been asked to record the sessions, and it's easy with the BTV setup to just hit the record button and go from there. So, you know, we'll, we'll see how this works out, but we need to get into a situation where we all understand the revenue, all understand the expense probabilities, and, you know, again, kind of review the capital plan. You heard some capital items tonight. The school has capital items, and as we go through the process, we, we need to be in front of the planning this year, much further than we were last year. So that's the objective. Final comment is, again, thank you, everybody, for working through the details of the special permit. I think that's really important. It's the, it's the goal of this legislative body to set policy, and that certainly does set policy, so good job to everybody involved. In 30 days, that'll become effective. So when we look for businesses, we now have an opportunity in 30 days. We can start asking businesses outside of Bridgewater to come locate passive businesses within Bridgewater that do cultivation. There's an awful lot of tax revenue possibilities there, and when we talk about new schools, when we talk about operational needs for shifting schools around, new, new equipment, things for the town, we need to increase our business base to larger than 12%. So I'm going to encourage the economic folks here in the town to go out and actively try to get a test business here in town. It has no customers. It's a, it's a process, and it has high-paying jobs, valuable equipment that gets taxes property, and is a growth factor. And the same thing with cultivation. There's a lot of stores that are going to open nearby, not, certainly not in Bridgewater, but there's going to be ten in Brockton, at least one in Middleborough, potentially one in Halifax, one in Abington, and all these need supplies, cultivation supplies. And by passing this ordinance tonight, this zoning ordinance, we have the opportunity to leverage, leverage that, that business opportunity and to help the town of Bridgewater with additional taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Thank you. I'd like to just extend thanks to everyone involved with the comprehensive plan process that's been underway throughout the course of this year, and will continue through the fall. And I had been reading, a number of the, rereading, really, a number of the comments that were posted online on the website for that purpose that the Barrett Group had established, and I'm always very impressed by the, the nature of the comments and the degree of thoughtfulness that they represent. And I just think that as we're going to be embarking on the fall season, when in fact we anticipate that that initiative will wrap up, I just think that it's been a very valuable undertaking, and I think that the many people involved have done a great job to this point, and that's it.
Mr. Souza?
Yes, I want to thank all the committees and the members who worked hard on that ordinance to get this zoning taken care of. That's a great thing that we've been working on. The other thing is, when I first brought up the idea of a testing facility, I thought I was going to get shot before I left, and I'm very glad to hear that most of you are all in favor of it because it is a great opportunity for an income as far as tax revenue goes. Thank you.
And finally, this evening, a ditto, all my colleagues have said about the Fourth of July Committee. They did a great, great job and did a lot of hard work to get our Fourth of July off and without any incident. But it's never too late to donate. You can donate now for 2020. Go to the Fourth of July website, Bridgewater Fourth of July Committee's website to donate, to get off, get them off to a good start for next year. They really worked hard this year in raising, raising money, and they're going to have to do the same for 2020. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to attend a local function with our Mandela Fellows who are here at the university. It's an annual educational opportunity for them, and I had an opportunity to meet a, a young lady who is a, a television host on a public television station in South Africa, and she talks about issues, her, her role in being the television host is she, she talks about the, the issues in South Africa relative to violence and against women and so forth, and how she brings on guests to talk about what they have gone through and how to walk people through overcoming it and dealing with it and so forth. It was very, very intriguing, and, and again, before this meeting tonight, we met a few more of them at the neighbor's dinner, so they won't be here for much longer. They get here for about six weeks, three more. Earlier this afternoon, I attended with Counselor George and the town manager. At the university, we received a, a community, a donation, if you will, a check for the, from the university for our, for our town. And it was emphasized at that meeting, and it was emphasized at the dinner tonight of how we are a community, and the university is part of our community. What they can do to help us, which they showed today, is very, very important. I said at the meeting this afternoon, how one of the great things about Bridgewater State University is that it's not a gated community. It's not a gated college. It's an open college. There's no traffic lights to get in there. There's no pass to open a gate to get in there. It's an open community. It's in our community. And right now, and hopefully it will continue, we have a good relationship with the university, and hopefully that will can continue. I think President Clark expressed that tonight with his, with his annual check to the town for police, fire, schools, and so forth. That's all I have for this evening. There is no executive session, and our next meeting is not until Tuesday, August 6, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.